This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening to those who may be on the go-to meeting. Council. There is a quorum present. All members of the council are present except for a council member, Marle, who will not be joining tonight. I call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. February 21st, 2023. If you bow your heads with me off the invitation, Pledge of Allegiance. Father in heaven, we thank you for the many blessings that we've received. We thank you for your guidance and pray for such guidance and your wisdom and all future aspects of our city. Amen. If you would join me with the, in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. To the republic of which it stands. I pledge allegiance to God and to this world. With my teeth.
Thank you. Item three, proclamations and presentations. It gives me great pleasure, this item is the 10-year service award to Fire Chief Kurt May.
I don't know how. Eric. May. Years ago?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. All of here. For that time. For following. And then eight years ago. You were our first.
Forty. Five.
But he plays one fire. And have several things I want to present. One is the service award, this tip is awarded to Fire Chief Kurt May. And grateful appreciation for 10 years of dedicated service. City of Hassett, 2013, 2023. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Then give service plaque. And last, if not, please. Oh, my. That diamond, good for it. Still. Got your 10-year service.
Right, thank you so much, and my pleasure.
Pete.
Thank you, sir.
Over the Y.
Over the Y.
Got it.
I do want to, I do want to make a comment. Our leadership, you know, in here, recent month, I actually going back to, but council agreed to go to a full 24. Bring on. Yes. He may have been number of things, number of things. And both of them. It is. In period. There. The third. Of, of. Ah. Or. Ah. I think that will soon, if it's the count, is that. What I say. For. Ah. What? So. Great, great.
Thank you.
Our next item is number four, citizen participation and comments. Is there anyone in the chambers or online that would like to make comments as a council?
No one has signed up, and we have not received any messages from anybody online.
Very good. Um, and I see none in the chambers. And then we'll just move on to item number five. Items of community interest. Uh. The Hassett Public Library has been awarded, this is, this is a big deal, though. The Hassett Public Library has been awarded the 2022 Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Library Excellence Award. Of 542 public library systems in Texas, Hassett Public Library is one of only 73. That's our award. Hassett Public Library is in the top 15% of all public libraries in the state of Texas. Uh, they just been blessed, they got an excellent staff, and I'll have to give, you know, Barbara Thompson, you know, recently retired, very instrumental in that, but we have great things to look ahead with Kelly Turner, our new library director, and is very excited. 5B, Saturday, May 6th, 2023, is the general election. And City of Hassett general election will be held on Saturday, May 6th, 2023, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. For the purpose of electing mayor, council member place two and council member place four. The filing period is ended, the following filed for place on the ballot, Mayor Gary Holsey incumbent and Patricia Hillborn. Place two is Kerry Rickett incumbent and Morgan Aaron. Place four is Hector Nahera incumbent and Ruthie Do. The drawing for place on the ballot will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, at 9:00 AM. At the Hassett Community Center, 105 Main Street, Hassett, Texas. 5C, I need everybody's help. We have job openings. If you know young men and young women that want to work, we have a job, we offer excellent benefits, and we have open arms. Send them our way, please. Let's go to item six, the administrative reports. Um, council, is there any questions that you have on our administrative reports? I do know I've received one question with regard to finance and, uh. But nonetheless, anything, any questions on our reports? I did have a question on finance, a question I had, it appeared with regard to utility franchise, it appeared to be declining. Would you address that for us, Ms. Lamb?
The city receives franchise fees for the different utilities, electric, gas, telephone, cable, and we have agreements with various different companies that provide those services. Um, what in the February report, it looks like we've had a decrease from the prior year. However, um, in the prior year, we, some of these fees, they come in quarterly, some come in monthly, some come in kind of randomly, and then one of our biggest fees is from TRA and it comes in annually. Last year, that TRA fee came in in the month of January, and this year it came in in the month of February. So tonight you have, um, the January reports, even though we're in the middle of February. And so I just wanted to point out that in 2022, in January of 2022, we received from TRA a franchise fee of $48,743. And this year in February, we received a franchise fee of $109,515. So, um, although it appears in the January reports that they're decreasing, they've actually increased because we got quite a substantial increase from TRA. Um, most of the franchise, franchise fees, um, with the exception of cable and phone because of the different regulations that kind of follow that industry, determining whether you're a cable provider, or a phone provider, or a video provider makes a difference in which franchise fee they pay. So they all like to argue which fee they should be paying, and so we, we have some fluctuations in those, but your, um, electric, gas, uh, those fees should be due to the new people in town and the new accounts that even we have at the City of Hassett, they should still be increasing. And I think in the February report, um, we should have had, um, in the month of February, about 33% of our collections that we budgeted, and it was 25%, so even without the TRA, it was getting close to where we were budgeted even without it. So, um, everything looks good on that front, it's just a timing difference.
Council, is any, any other questions with regard to our reports? If not, then I'll move on to number seven, updates on active items, projects, and event recap, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, if y'all have had a chance to drive through this part of town down here, you go by the park over here, you will notice there is a lot of scraped ground and ground being raised over there, the tennis court project is going strong, uh, that's been working out real well. We even were able to use some of our soil, our pile behind the fire station, about 200 tons of it basically, on that site to help with that leveling everything out. So that's been really good, so it's going great, uh, we're very excited about that project. And then our Hassett Parkway construction project is moving pretty, pretty well right now, everything's gotten moved, Encore's gotten their poles moved across, so now the other utilities can slowly get started on moving their stuff over onto the new poles, and the old poles can finally go away, so that's going to move on good. Uh, we've about got the traffic plan that will be in phase two for Avondale Hassett, because once that starts, there's sections going to be shifting traffic over, there's going to be a lot of barricades, a lot of, lot of signage and things on that road once that project portion starts, and that's coming sooner than later, that's going to be here real soon. And so people will probably not be real happy with us for a while with all that, because it's going to be tight through there. Uh, there's even one of the roads, uh, and I'm sure most people in that neighborhood probably will not mind, John Day Road will be such a tight bit with this construction that anybody with an 18-wheeler is not coming in off Avondale Hassett Road in there during this whole time, and this is going to be for close to a year's time, but this is going to be this way. They need in there with an 18-wheeler, they're going down to Blue Mountain Road to come in, because there won't be any way to get there from this side. So that's going real well, and our Hassett Parkway L project is definitely going well, they're out there putting topsoil down, putting mulch down, we're going to be starting on some grass, which they're actually going to do sod to try to get ahead of things a little bit, and that's part of that project, so that is on schedule for next month, we'll all be able to go down there and drive on the new road, so that'll be great. We've got a list on this, but we have another project, if any of y'all driving down 156 and see all these little hoses laying across over the place. We've got a, uh, project, it's Mayor's project, traffic mitigation project citywide that he's been working on just about since he came into office, I mean, we've been dealing with this for a long time now, but we've got a contractor lined up and stuff, but we're getting all these counts for traffic so that we can move this project forward for speed, they've got, they're going to do speed counts, traffic counts of people turning movements, all these things up and down through that section of roads, so you'll be seeing a lot of this for a while, until we get all these great new numbers back. And, you know, Mike, Mike knows a lot about it, he's the one who sets all this fun stuff up, but, you know, I, I get to see it all out in the field, he gets to do all the hard legwork in the office, setting all these studies up. But that's going on, so if you got any questions about it, I mean, Mike or I or somebody, we'll try to answer as best we can.
We had a kickoff meeting for the speed school safety improvement corridor study, as we're calling it, and that'll, that'll run, as David stated, from Intermodal south down to Bonz Ranch Road, it will analyze all the intersections and come back with some recommendations for safety improvements and, uh, look at some things that could be done differently out there on the highway. Um, so that's, that's the first step, and then phase two would be the implementation of the recommendations that come out of that study. So phase one of the project, and will be some citywide improvements off the state system, uh, consisting of signage, striping, various other traffic mitigation measures that'll occur over in the LaTara area, Blue Mountain Road, over by the Caraway subdivision, so the mayor asked us to find some low-hanging fruits, so we went after those, that project will come back to you on, uh, March 6th, we're meeting with the contractor this next week, finalize the, uh, change order for that project, get that going, and then we had our kickoff meeting for the corridor study, uh, last week, David, the mayor and I, and the fire department joined us on that, and so that should take, uh, probably about two months, get all that data collected, get it processed, get a recommendation, then we'll come back with another plan for the 156 improvements, and then we'll have to work with the state to get those implemented in phase two, so a lot of things coming, um, but first and foremost will be the, the things around town that you'll see, and so that'll, that'll all come back to you on March 6th for consideration and award.
Council, any questions?
Yeah, just, I have a question, how long is the mitigation study? How long does it take?
The traffic counts, uh, take about a week, week and a half, then there's, uh, about another week of field observation, because that was pretty important for folks to actually get out, the engineer that's preparing the, the, the study actually need to observe the traffic, the conditions, the things that you can't pick up with the, with the traffic counts. And so I'd say two weeks of data collection, which is set to begin, uh, in earnest this week, did they get the tubes out?
Sure did, they, they've been, that guy was out here all day putting down tubes.
There you go, so two weeks of that, and then probably a two, three weeks worth of processing, and then, uh, another month, finish the report, so two months, we should have a, a report ready and some recommendations.
You know, one of the objectives, I mean, so it's, it's two parts, it addresses the entire city. The plan does, but it was split up into two parts. Hmm. Excuse me. Part one was, uh, all aspects of the city other than 156. Because 156, doing the speed study and, uh, coordination with TechStop to implement anything, that, the things that we come up with. But phase two, that part two, is what you're seeing first right now, just doing the traffic study, but what, as you, um, David and Mike said, March 6th, you'll get, be, be presented to you, the contract with, uh, the first part, which is everything other than 156. And that's where we'll be addressing, uh, the elementary school, safety zone, and markings and things of that nature and light that's needed, uh, some, uh, different, uh, speed mitigation measures throughout the city.
Yeah, a lot of speed mitigation measures.
I do want to mention on 156, that part, one of the specific objectives that I laid out is, is what that, uh, uh, we have four potential schools on. Is to within the TechStop criteria, the, the consultant has to follow that criteria, but is to, where we can implement speed zones, uh, school speeds, let's do that. And also is the other is, uh, entries of subdivisions on to 156, is to put, uh, do not block intersection, but also incorporated that, because there's signs associated with that, but is to strike the highway itself, we're talking about this area, do not block this area. So it'd be very evident, so these are small, this whole project is within, you know, I'll say relatively small, but it's, it's the low-hanging fruit, we can bring the people's consciousness. Let's, and that will help ease some of what's happened, but again, with the opening of the L, March 31st, uh, we are planning some kind of soft opening there, and, uh, to acknowledge our investors and the construction and project management team. But that should give us some really good relief from the industrial, the logistics traffic that we experience now on 156. Anyway, that's, uh, I want to tie that together.
I've got one more question, just in the lead off to that, will this study count the number of big trucks, big rigs that are coming through there, or, or the hoses, or is there a way to do it, maybe if, if the hoses don't pick it up, will the actual people be counting how many big rigs are coming through?
Yes, sir. It should, to have video of the intersections, they'll be classified, but I can see.
Yeah, Mike's right, they're setting cameras to go along with all this stuff, so there's going to be a lot of data, a lot.
Very good, and, but thanks to you, Council, y'all approved the, and the budget, initial budget for that, and you'll get the contracts back to approve as such. Anything else, no other questions there? Very good.
Thank you.
I, I do want to make, as far as, um. Items of community interest, you know, in, in light of what's happened in Ohio, two, two major events, one is East Palestine, and the other one in Bradford, Ohio, East Palestine, you know, they had the train derailment and, uh, the burning off of whatever that was in those tanks, and also in, uh, Bedford was the, uh, explosion, it was in a steel mill, I believe it was. But that all goes at the heart of we got this radio station. And it's sometime, yes, we are railroad community. We're here, we have that stuff traveling up and down our lines. At the time. We do have plants in Hassett that if there were a catastrophic event, it would it would not be good. And with our limited ingress and egress out, in and out of the city, it's not enough to say you need to get out. You need to get out in a certain direction, and only if the, per event, there's no pre-recording that we can do. But so the, uh, Fire Chief and I were speaking, as well as others, is that, uh, all our firemen are going to be trained on this radio station, because you can go live at any time, and I will include several members of the public works department as well. That they can go live and give us warning of action to take. Okay, if you need to get out, what portion needs to get out, and in what direction, all very important information to help, uh, direct and have some orderly kind of evacuation, as orderly it could be. But that was, I was, when, when those came up, that was at the heart of my concern when I requested this radio station. So it, uh, but again, Keith May's working, us working together, you know, helped made that happen. And, uh, so I got to thank everybody on that, that's, uh, everything we do here is a, it's a staff-wide effort, staff-wide, and then without your support, Council, none of that. Thank you. All right. Um. I think that's the last item I wanted to update you on that's not on here. Any other questions before I leave this, uh, item number seven? We could go to, uh, item eight, consent agenda. Eight A is approve, approval of the February 6th, 2023 regular city council meeting minutes.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I move to approve the, um, consent agenda as presented.
Motion's made to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there a second?
I second that.
There is a second, any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous? Motion passes. Item nine, public hearing ordinances, resolutions, and action items. Nine A, discuss, consider, and act regarding the approval of Sweetgrass Phase Two final plaque. Mr. Swink.
Yeah, Mayor Holsey and, and members of the council, this Sweetgrass Phase Two plaque contains 189 acres, 200, of which there are 239 residential lots, seven HOA tracks, one restaurant slash office track, and one commercial track. The engineer, our engineer that's sitting beside me here has actually reviewed these plans and has recommended that it be approved based upon, uh, his findings, that they are in accordance with, uh, the rules and regulations of our subdivision ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission on February 7th, a couple of weeks ago, uh, made a motion, and they recommended approval of this, uh, a plaque at special meeting.
Council, it's yours. What, uh, any questions?
Mayor Holsey, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Sweetgrass Phase Two final plaque.
Motion is made to approve the Sweetgrass Phase Two final plaque, is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, a second?
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is unanimous, motion passes. Nine B, discuss, consider, and act regarding the approval of issuance of a conditional letter of acceptance for Sweetgrass subdivisions, Phase 1A and Phase 1C, for the purpose of issuing residential building permits prior to the said subdivisions receiving final acceptance. Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor Holson and Council. Uh, this is something a little unusual, but, uh, our public work staff and our engineering staff have done an inspection for the Sweetgrass Phases 1A and 1C, and found everything to be in order, we've gotten all the punch list items done, but there is one item that they cannot fulfill at this time, and that is they have no way to get, they cannot, they've ordered, but they cannot get the lighting for the subdivision at this time, it's on back order, and I believe they're sending somewhere up as much as eight months out to get these things. So Mayor Holsey has worked on their behalf, because our ordinance today says, you know, no occupancy permits shall be issued for any kind of structures, buildings of any kind on any lot, uh, shall be occupied unless we have a, all the required public improvements, which is everything, in place and functioning properly, so that we give our engineer and public work final acceptance letter. Well, technically, we're not allowed to do that without these being there, so they've worked out a memorandum of understanding with the developer and his builders, and those are before y'all tonight, because this is the only way, it's up to y'all to decide whether we And those are before y'all tonight because this is the only way it's up to y'all to decide whether we can move forward. If y'all okay with these, we move forward. If not, then we wait until the lights either come in or some temporary lighting, something, something else would have to be a, so that we could move forward. You got any questions? Maybe we can come up and answer anything we can do. I don't know how to read all of these, but it's been a lot, it's been a lot of work.
Yeah, council, it's uh, any questions?
I do have a question. Again, you know, I'm from the aeronautic industry. I don't like things that are conditional acceptances or waivers or anything like that. Is there, I guess what I'm looking at is there was a reason for this ordinance to be signed in the first place. And I guess I'm assuming, and I guess that's what I'm asking, it's based on safety, it's based.
All of this is based upon the safety of the neighborhood lighting, you know, being a portion of the entire thing of a neighborhood is having the lighting. Especially in ordinance, especially pushes for intersection lighting, very important as a portion of stuff. But yes, it's to do with safety. That's the reason it's there.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, I'd like to know that who is going to have to enforce this new ruling? And will this be an additional hardship on any of our staff?
Uh, this would be additional work for the building service department. When these come in, they would have to look at these permits, determine which, where they are, of course, as they normally do. But then they will have to send out additional paperwork that they will have to be sure has been taken care of and approved when the builders come in. So yes, there will be additional, some additional work they're all going to have to do.
How many home builders are we talking about that's involved in this?
Oh, if I remember correctly. Well, either there's a total, there is a total of five.
Five, I believe.
And all five would have to adhere to this change in the ordinance.
All five would have to adhere to this.
And the oversight would be by our staff.
Our staff would have to be sure all this is done. And then we will have to go back out once the lights are in place. We have to do a quick inspection again to make sure they're where they're supposed to be throughout. Everything is working and in order so that we could then do the final true acceptance letter for the for these two phases, the one A and the one C.
Yeah, I don't have any questions further for you, but I do have a couple of statements. I do believe, like member Ricketts, that we should abide by the ordinances and not deviate from them. And I believe that the lack of adherence to the ordinances in the past that has caused great expense and infringement to the city and its residents. Therefore, I really don't think we should deviate what we have in place.
I have a question. Who was responsible for ordering the lights? Was it the developer or the builder?
The developer ordered the lights.
Okay, so he knew.
That's part of his overall construction pack.
So he knew that he had to have these in place before any builder can move forward.
That's what subdivision ordinance require.
Thank you.
Mr. Pettigo, yeah. All right, y'all have any more questions for, well, let Mr. Pettigo come up.
I can wait.
Good evening. My name is Brett Pettigo with Terra Manor. Um, our address is forty four sixteen West Lover's Lane, Dallas, Texas, Suite two hundred. Um, and I appreciate you guys taking this uh, this item up tonight and it's been brought before you. So I understand some of the questions on how we got here. Um, I just want to make sure that um, you know, the ordinances and so this is not our first subdivision in Hazlet Tech. Um, we've built several subdivisions and um, this is the first time this issue has been brought up to our requirement. And I believe the reason that it hasn't been brought up at this point is if you actually look at subdivision ordinance, there is, it's a clear path on what the development process in Hazlet would be. Franchise utilities such as electricity and gas are a private utility that's maintained and operated by an electric co-op in Tri County. And it could be Atmos Gas or some other gas provider that 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 installed that infrastructure. Um, we always provide all the requirements for them. Um, and as the ordinance states, we should provide a plan in our construction plans to show that there won't be a conflict with any of the public infrastructure. The public infrastructure would be the infrastructure that the city is accepting at the end of our project. And they're taking that on. The city doesn't, does not maintain the electric for gas utilities. That is a private and that's someone else. So whenever we're talking about the acceptance in a subdivision ordinance, the acceptance of public infrastructure, electric and gas is not a part of that. And it has never been part of that, that city acceptance process. So the streetlight plan, so um, if you were, if you were to look through your ordinances and I think the letter in front of you references section F one. Um, it says in a subdivision or tract of land where community facilities to include the wave example with no limitation, water, sanitary, storm drain facilities. And then it's got street lighting or street improvement. So we're doing street improvement. Street lighting is not a public infrastructure item that y'all would accept and that y'all take. So it shouldn't be a part of the city acceptance process. So if you go on further in your, in your ordinances.
Well, excuse me, let me interrupt. Are you there trying to say we shouldn't, that should not be? I mean, it is in there now. Are you trying to build a case that shouldn't be?
No, I'm explaining your ordinances so that everybody's wondering why we, how we got here. I'm just trying to make sure because we've never brought this up before. So um, if you go down to further, it says city, city shall accept the public improvement for ownership and perpetual maintenance. This is um, in section seven, under supervision and inspection of construction. Electric and gas is not something that the city inspects and and looked at. That is because it's a private item. We don't pay inspection fees. It's not a part of our CFA to pay inspection fees on those items. Um, and so that's why it says city shall accept the public improvement for ownership and perpetual maintenance. Electric and gas is not for your perpetual maintenance. So you're not accepting, making sure we understand that. Section three, public improvements for urban subdivisions, which is what our neighborhood is considered. If you look down at the street lighting section of that, it says, street lighting shall be provided on all streets and shall conform to all applicable city policies concerning street lighting and shall be approved by the city engineer. The four final acceptance of streets, alleys, sewers and other utilities, which are the public item. Streetlight locations and installation shall be coordinated by the developer. So the process is for your city accept is to accept the public infrastructure that you're going to own and perpetually maintain, which do not include electricity or streetlight because that's put in by someone else. We provided in the construction plans, a streetlight plan so that those locations would be located to meet this requirement of the subdivision requirement. And so going down just one more paragraph, final acceptance for new subdivision, when the street, the alley, the drainage, water and sanitary sewer improvements provided by the developer have been completed by the contractor, the contractor should notify the city that the improvements are ready for final inspection. Not electric, not gas. So you're asking how we got here? We've, we've developed, this is our sixth phase of development in Hazlet Tech. We've always followed this same ordinance. And what I've said to the mayor and everybody else is if y'all want to now go away from that and start doing streetlight and electric, we can do that going forward, but we've all, we've set up all of our schedules. We've set up everything based on the criteria of what this ordinance says right here. Going and and that's how this, that's why we're here because there's kind of a conflict in your ordinance as to how this could happen. So we thought this would be an adequate workaround to get past this. And if in future y'all would like streetlights to be in, let's just, let us know ahead of time and not like at the, at the last second. Because in all other subdivisions that we've done up to this point, streetlights have not been a requirement ever. Building permits have gone in, building permits have been issued. We haven't had MOUs, we haven't had all of the paperwork that we're talking about doing. We created that for this subdivision and I don't think your ordinance necessarily says you have to do that. But that being said, we're okay and we're, if everybody will, will move forward with this tonight, we're okay doing that because it makes perfect sense. We wouldn't, we would not be able to get, if the electricity or gas wasn't for the home, we wouldn't be able to get a CO anyway. The builder wouldn't be able to get a CO. That is in your ordinance, that is something that's required. So the act of city accepting the facilities and a city acceptance letter and allowing billing permits to proceed is based on the public infrastructure that you're going to own and maintain, not electric and gas. Now, that being said, we want to work through this, but I'm just making sure everybody understands, we're not just up here asking to, for you guys to bend the rule. We're just asking you because there's a conflict in your ordinance and there's some confusion in your ordinance that we do this to get by. And if there's something in the future you want to do on some other phases, we're happy to accommodate that. This isn't something that we're trying to just say, hey, break the rules here. I think you're within the rules and you don't even need any of this paperwork to do this, to just accept the subdivision. But if it makes y'all feel better and y'all have comfort from us and our builders that we're not going to be coming in to try to get a CO, then the item before you would allow you to have that extra comfort that you, that you already have within your ordinance. That's all we're saying. So it's just kind of a clarification. I wouldn't say this is an exception to your rules. This is a clarification to your rules that we're going to allow for a conditional acceptance and get to an approval down the road once the streetlights are in. So I just want to make sure that's, that's how we got here. We're not just here at the last second trying to ask you to bend the rule. Because I don't think we're asking you to bend the rules tonight. I think we're asking you to work within the rules and then have an understanding that our home builders aren't going to come in and start asking for a CO until the streetlights are. And that streetlights, as I said in the letter, are probably about ninety to a hundred and ten days away, which should be in plenty of time because the, the home, the home building cycles are four to five months. So we should have plenty of time to get that in. Anyway, I just want to back clarify.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Pettigo?
I, I do have a question. I understand the gas and utility are separate things, but that is different from utility lights. I mean, are you saying that these are the one and the same thing?
Yeah, so the, the franchise utility of the electric co-op Tri County is who installs the electric conduit, the electric line and the streetlight. The streetlights are a part of that franchise utility.
So who's responsible for those?
Tri County, after they're built, Tri County is responsible for maintaining.
Not maintaining them, to put them in. So I'm, I'm very clear on the utilities, the gas and the electric, but who's responsible to put in the lights themselves? The actual fixtures, the lights.
The franchise utility, Tri County, is the contractor that's installing. They have a preferred contractor, which is DCG, who's, who's doing all the install of the electric lines. They also install the street.
Are you asking maybe, as Pettigo, maybe who's responsible for ordering them?
We, we are, and we, we ordered them, we ordered them exactly when we, when we always ordered them. But it's, but it's, it's a contract that Tri County has that they install all of that. After we're done with the, the roads and the public infrastructure, they move in and start putting the private infrastructure.
Any other questions for Mr. Pettigo?
Yeah, one more question. You said this, this is, you've built here before, but this has never happened before?
Yeah, we've got a subdivision right now with billing permits filling where the streetlights are not burning.
So these other ones, you, you had the lights in before moving forward?
No, I'm saying the streetlights are like, we've got a subdivision right now that the streetlights are not in and billing permits and the, the acceptance was going. This is, this is the first time this has ever come up in a subdivision has. And I think it's because the ordinance says what it says, but I read the. So we're, we're only doing this because at the walkthrough, engineer says, where are the streetlights? And we said, well, we, we're doing it just like we always.
I guess that's sort of my question too. It doesn't matter if an ordinance is in an ordinance and there was oversight beforehand and someone comes and audits it and actually looks to find that there is written in the ordinance. I, I hear your argument where you're saying that you don't think it is. And after I get done talking with you, I'm going to turn right around and talk to our lawyer. You know, and stuff on the aspect of, you know, an oversight doesn't say that it's okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm saying that's the reason we've done it because the ordinance, this is the way everybody has interpreted the ordinance is up to them. And now everybody wants to interpret the ordinance differently. And that's why the workaround, we're doing it because.
So let me change real quick, go to you, Jeremy. Is, is this an interpretation issue or is this, is our ordinance have conflicted?
So I, I would agree to the extent that there probably is some language that would, could be clarified better and written better. I mean, just like any other ordinance, but I don't think what is not accurate or what I like to say is very fair, in my opinion, is that the street lighting is contemplated in our subdivision ordinance as a public group. That is required to be installed by the developer. So I understand Pettigo's argument that it is ultimately to be maintained and by a third party, by the Tri County Electric Company. But uh, our ordinance though, do state street lighting as a public group and like say there's a whole section about, about it. For me, that's not, that's not where there's issues clarity of the light public improvement.
Where, where is that then? I just want to make sure I understand where, so I know, and I've asked this question, nobody's been able to give me that. Or does it say that?
Those are the sections that you cited yourself that we already included in the letter. And so there's a whole section on street. It's my understanding of public.
Um, but it says that, that before acceptance, before acceptance, we would have streetlight location that is not installed.
I think the word installation is in there as well.
No, it says, streetlight and installation shall be coordinated by the developer. So yeah, we're going to install them, but why would we do that before final acceptance if they're required for acceptance? Why would we have to go get that? Because they, everybody contemplated that it was going to happen after except. That's why we came in and we did the streetlight plan and coordinated. So the question is, if you're going to consider it a public utility, number one, you need to main, own, per the CFA, you would have to own and maintain that perpetual if you want to make it a public item. And why would you need to have all of that worked out? And why would the language be in here that we do it before final acceptance?
Mr. Rogers, do you have, uh, you know, that ordinance as well? Final acceptance is inclusive of what?
Everything that is in the construction plans for a subdivision, which does have the lighting plan. Because it says, we don't have to inspect the underground portion, that's true. But where each one of those is placed, we are supposed to, because they are in the plans. So we got to be sure that they fit according to the lighting plan that was delivered to us. And we do have a maintenance, different kind of maintenance. We have to pay for these lights once two years, which they like to use the date is the final acceptance date from the city. Well, if the lights aren't there, our ordinance says we, they pay for them for two years. From the date of final acceptance, not from the date we have the lights in and turned on, from the date of that final acceptance letter that we sent. And they, they're real good about making sure we have to get the bill that, that two years. But then city pays for that bill from now on. And the signage that goes in the neighborhood actually is mounted to these signs. Now those, we have to take care of all that. And they, once, once it's in place, after their maintenance agreement is up, we take over. We got to replace all those signs, any of the hardware that breaks on them, all that's up to us. We don't get a high on any of that, we have to maintain those. So yeah, we maintain all them, we maintain the bills once that's in place.
And I'll say one more thing about what it says. So this is certainly a non-standard agreement. That's why we presented it to the council for your approval. Um, at the same time, the purpose of this is so that it will allow the developer to have those lighting installed while also during the, simultaneous to the. while also during the, simultaneous to the construction of the home. So, no one should be moving in, the, the COs will not be issued. Instead, it will just be the billing permit. So, nobody should be living there at the time um, until the streetlight are, streetlights are installed. So, this, uh, if, if it goes according to the timeline that Mr. Pettigo mentioned, the streetlight should be installed prior to any COs even being contemplated to be issued. Uh, however, if the timeline for the installation for the street lighting continues on for several more months, no, the COs just simply cannot be issued on those homes that are constructed. And this, uh, does require that those billing permits, um, on each of those homes state the same, that a CO cannot be issued. Again, so that any of those home buyers know what's happened from the very beginning of this.
Traffic moving in and out at night, um, when this streetlight. So, this is really just to work through the process a little bit. And, and as I said, if this is something going forward, y'all want us to do, we can implement, we can plan for it ahead of time. So, we've got the phase you just approved tonight. If you want the streetlights in, I can plan for that. I can do that. I've got months to think about that and get a plan in place for that. It's just when we've always followed certain, you know, system and guideline through a city and we get to the final acceptance and find out we're changing, that's why we needed to work around on this one. That's, so that's, that's why.
Well, I'll, I'll take difference to your last statement, that we're changing. I just read the ordinance and when it says about final acceptance, it lists, uh, it's inclusive of streetlight. That's why I went to the extent, working with you to develop this other paperwork, excuse me, Mr. Pettigo, to develop this paperwork to present to the council. This is council decision.
I, I, that was the one thing I said, is if that's what, if everybody takes this interpretation and wants to move forward with this, we're in agreement with this because it works exactly the same way it has in the past. This has a little bit extra paperwork with it. And that's all, that's the only thing that's different because the way our builders are going to act, the way we're going to act, the way we're going to move our schedule for it is exactly the same. And this paperwork is there to comfort and make sure everybody feels good about it. And I, and, and if the timing works better for David on his, when his two-year starts and all that, I'm fine with that. We're fine with all of the requirements that are in. But I just wanted to make sure everybody didn't think we're just in here asking for an exception and trying to do something just willy-nilly. That, because it was kind of sounding like we're just in here asking for an exception and we didn't think about things ahead of time. I just want to make sure we, everybody understood that. That was.
I think, yes. Another question too, and I, this might be probably more for you, Mr. Rogers. And it goes back to that safety that I brought up earlier too. Cause you brought something up just right now, Mr. Pettigo, on the aspect of the lights not being there. I remember, I'm in probably one of the newest neighborhoods and that's North. And I was one of the first houses coming into Northland and I know that we had an awful lot of issues of stealing, robbing, um, of the property around the.
Yep, they did.
Even, even to the point that some of us would stay up and try to, you know, try to catch this stuff. So, um, I know I had all my first windows in my house were completely, were stolen. So, I know a neighbor that had HVAC system stolen.
Is that due to no lighting at night?
What I'm just saying, we didn't have the great lighting at night. I think even Nor- in Northland, this might have been another one, you know, we didn't have great lighting at night and we brought that up, that we needed lighting. We got to the point, even to the residents, that we actually had to put cameras up. Um, actually, even one of the developers paid to have a police, um, scanner brought out one of those booms that come out and act, you know, because we had so much that.
There was, but you had a lot of problems with that and that.
So, again, I'm, I'm going to say, is, would lighting help or?
It always does. I mean, that's why we do a lot of the lighting we do, is because of that somewhat of a deterrent. Is it a great deterrent? Uh, anybody talks to any places, not really, but that is what it's partially, that's one of the biggest things is for public safety. People can see each other and for hopefully deter some crime. I understand, I know exactly what he's talking about. We've had a, we had a light pole that had to be ordered through Tri-County for another neighborhood and it took close to thirteen months to get a single pole.
But that was a twenty-year-old, twenty-two-year-old design.
And an old subdivision and they just aren't making them as many as they used to, but by side of everything is for good big day.
Are there other areas that are experiencing that we just can't get our light poles?
Currently, no. The other ones that are also on Tri-County over here to the west, uh, they've been so far. They're on their next phase right now and they're still pretty good ways from that point, but in their phase three, uh, they had all the lighting and all in place, uh, when we did the walkthrough on it. So, they got their, whatever the style they have, but.
Mayor, I've got a couple of comments. Start with the second one first. For a future agenda item, preferably a next council meeting, I want staff to bring to us a revised ordinance for the subdivision ordinance in section one dot one, uh, section F dot nine, defining exactly what we're talking about with the lighting, timing of the lighting, when it needs to be in. I don't want any more ambiguity on when developers need to put something in. If it's delayed, it's delayed. That's part of a project plan. If lighting, if, if one section of your project plan is delayed, your whole project's delayed. Alright. Point number two, this address city staff, city staff shouldn't even have gone down the road here. City has tentatively agreed. We're sitting here discussing what's in this ordinance. City staff should have known what was in the ordinance. They shouldn't have spent the time with all these developers. Like, we said, there's five different developers, so we put MOUs together. So, we spent all the developers' times getting these signed, drafting letters back to the developer, engaging the lawyer on time to say it's tentative. We wasted a lot of city staff time on something that, that really doesn't sound, it shouldn't be to this point. I mean, we need the lighting installed before, you know, the permits for the builders are set up.
Well, I'll, I'll comment to that, that comment is, a lot of staff time was not wasted, very minimal amount. At like probably nine, a city staff, which is.
Address the MOUs on here.
The mayor, the mayor drafted much of all of this. It was sent to the attorney for review and to put into legal angle and it was given to Mr. Pettigo.
Well, I would, I would consider you part of the staff that you run in the city.
Well, I, I am and.
Valuable to the city.
But it, this is an important matter. There are some things that I get involved in. This was, but also, uh, you know, tentatively agrees, comma, with city council approval.
Didn't even got to that stage. We should have, city staff should have told the developer, we're not going down that road.
Understood, understood and point well taken.
Thank you.
The last question is real quick, based upon what, um, Jeremy stated too. This almost may be moved if we look at the night sixty to ninety days, like, they get those in, they're not going to have it moving in during that timeframe and it's almost a moot point even on that, if everything goes according to the plan. Am I hearing that correct?
Uh, according to Mr. Pettigo's letter. Excuse me, you can keep your seat.
So, I'm, that's what I'm saying. If everything, you know, according to the letter goes according to the letter, then this is a moot point also.
Yes, could be.
That's all the questions I.
One thing I'm concerned about, we have experienced this in subdivisions for home construction was committed prior to final acceptance, that the home was finished, homes were finished. And you're not involved in this process. The builders aren't. The people who sign these MOUs are vice presidents or presidents, are managers of those companies, not the builder. The builder is the one that who comes and pulls permit, not the vice president. The builder builds the home and then it's ready for moving. If per se, your order doesn't come in for whatever reason, we have experienced that the builder sends that homeowner to the city and goes, well, the city is the one that won't let you move in. No, no, that wasn't the true case. Is that the builder knew, or well, maybe the builder didn't know what their vice president signed. And we don't need that. It's not the city. So, what assurance would we have that that won't happen?
Um, if it's, if that's your concern, you know, if you want me to have the builder, vice president, send the builder a letter and have them acknowledge it so that you, they can see that. But I, I have never had that in any of our subdivisions and I think if you were to look at the number of homes in our subdivisions versus other subdivisions, we've got the most and we haven't had that issue. But if you need that assurance, I'll get a letter signed from the builder, because I know them out in the field from the vice president. It's just, as you know, signatures aren't valid if they don't have the certain vice president credentials or whatever. So, I wanted to make sure and get the vice president to sign the letter so that it was an authorized signature on that letter, of that MOU. But if you want an extra acknowledgement from the builder, I'm happy to provide. It's, that's just, that's, that's just common sense and I agree, I don't want that issue either. So, that's, that's all I'm at. I'll, I'll, I can give you that assurance that I'll get those letters from the builders as well as the vice pres- for everybody.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, I know, uh, engineering and public workers are involved in this process. Let me ask you, what is your preference?
Well, the easiest thing is that everything's already done. I don't have to do any of this. That's the, that's about for any project, that everything's done. I mean, that's the way I feel about anything.
Engineering?
Well, we've been asked to follow the ordinance, no matter what we do, we tend to. Um, things tend to go smoother when everybody's following the same playbook. So, I can't really speak to what's happened in the past, but we've been tasked with following ordinance.
Alright, Mr. Council.
One last question, I guess, and this is to you, Mr. Pettigo, on that aspect of, you said in your letter, the six, the sixty to ninety days on the lights, when's the last time you checked on your quotes? When we started this letter process and this MOU process was actually about a month ago. So, we're, we're already ahead of the schedule and the builders haven't been able to submit a billing permit. So, the, we're just adding more cushion to that time as we move through. But, the, the schedule, I mean, I would still say that the schedule that I gave you is good. If not, it may be a little bit better based on them already now starting. And if you go out there, they're doing the underground electric and gas in the subdivision right now. So, they're, they're a week or two ahead of the schedule.
So, basically, then we're, if we're listening to your letter, it's almost a moot point even for this, that things are going to be on schedule, that you're going to get the lighting in before even first permits request?
No, before the first, so the, before the first CO. So, the, the way the process will, will go is the builders will submit. It, right now, I would say the process for billing permits is about a two to three week period. So, best case, two to three weeks once they submit. So, if we got an approval tonight for this, they're going to submit and before they're even allowed to start on that house, they got to go through the billing permit process. That permit would then be released, they would then order their materials and start getting things, so maybe another week to two. So, you got five weeks there, from there, but between there and the time they would ask for a final certificate of occupancy is another five months. So, we're talking about, you know, five to six months before a resident is even going to show up to try to be able to close on that home. Whereas, the electric and the streetlights will go in in about three months. So, there's, there's going to be three months there that the houses are finishing up on these first billing permit. There's still another three months that there will be lights out there. So, we're talking about a three, three to four month window here of, that we're allowing the homes to be starting, constructing and allowing permit to start working through the system while we're building the streetlight.
Very good. I got a couple of things here. So, you wrote that letter January eighteenth, we're past thirty days, well, thirty, you know, almost thirty days past that point. Well, more than thirty days. So, this ninety to sixty to ninety is now thirty to sixty days and you'll have the light in and operating?
What I, I'm going to stick to my original because when I wrote the letter, we held off because there were some items, some cleanup items that David and everybody wanted out there and I didn't want another contractor to come in and mess it all up until those other items that David wanted done.
Let me ask Mr. Rogers this. Um, are there any, I know, you know, street lightings go in and around, uh, our right, go in our right of way and lots are graded out and built and landscaped. Are there any issues with doing the lighting after the fact with regard to lots that, because we got a lot of issues.
Well, the biggest issue that I run into.
Lot, lot drainage.
His, his guy out there in the field, Mike, sure helps out with this, is these contractors for Tri-County Electric tend to run over all of their self fences and tears everything up a lot, more than they should. And he's correct, yeah, they're, they are at least two-thirds of the way on that one already with the, uh, so everything's already stubbed up out of the ground. They're going pretty, going big guns, but yeah, that's probably our biggest issue with these guys. But that's, we run into that pretty much from the day we accept it until the last house is done, that even when the contractor, their Tri-County comes in, just to go from there to service the house, they make a mess.
Uh, my, my question is, maybe answered, I just wasn't getting it, is with regard to the lot development, the landscape, all of it. Mm-hmm. Is there any issues encountered when the lights come in after?
Uh, we have had a few that ended up slightly off of what the plans were. So, they ended up smack dab in the middle of the drain that they created, a nice well drain down there and then the lighting contractor come in there and pops a light pole right in the middle of the darn thing.
How can we avert that?
Now, it doesn't rain.
How can we avert that? Does that put the onus on you?
If it's, you don't want, well, usually if that situation happens, we come and have them move the pole, move that. And that's just, again, that's the relationship that, like, the day with, if he runs into an issue like that, he calls, we get out there. But, we're not going to have a, a house, just to, that's not, that, that's not even, well, we'll be in with the streetlight twelve-four, they come in, start doing a final drain on the lot, getting, we're talking halfway through the billing. They'll be just getting through like frame, everybody's familiar with that process, like whatever they put the pad down. I, I start cleaning up just every few minutes. So, this is really just to, I think it takes a little pressure off of billing because if we don't, we will, they will just stacking up billing while these streetlights are going. They need to have eighty of the process all in a matter of time. So, all we're doing is allowing some to trick clean and some to start working. And some to start working through the process.
Well, and be aware, even we'll pass it on this first come, first served.
I, I understand. I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying this is a process. This is a process of the home being built over a six month period versus the streetlight going in in a three month.
Understood.
All right, council.
Okay. So we've talked a lot about a lot of stuff and, and I'm a numbers person. Okay. So number one, we have an ordinance that the public facilities are supposed to be in place before any billing permit is submitted or issued. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. There's ambiguity in whether that includes streetlights or not. By some, some define it. Depends, everybody has a different perception depending upon what side of the venture on or how it affects you. So, but there is a little ambiguity maybe. Number three. There are some subdivisions that have issued building permits prior to the streetlights being in. Is that correct?
That's.
That.
Mr. Rogers, that's your saying?
Okay.
Yes, prior ones have been done that way.
Okay. But going forward.
That's what we were tasked with.
We're not, we're following the ordinance. Whether the developer doesn't understand it or not, that's the ordinance. Number four, I think I'm on number four. The question is, are we going to allow a builder to start building and issue them a building permit prior to that happening? The CO really is going to come so far down the line that it'll probably already be in by then. So it's really, we're talking about building. Okay. And I guess, and along with you, um, Mr. Ricketts, um, I also have a concern about building construction going on with no lighting around and the safety issues for people. So that's, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that this is what we're talking about. All right.
Can I ask one further clarification? Cause that's where I guess I'm looking at here too. And I'm reading here just the front page. I don't have the actual ordinance, you know, I was trying to, you know, but the front page says, no occupancy permit shall be issued for any structure or building on a lot. So can you tell me the difference between occupancy permit and a building?
An occupancy permit allows, uh, for someone to actually occupy the house. Um, A, it's, it is issued at the very end once the final inspection has been conducted. My thing. Uh, building permit is issued at the very beginning of the process. So every house that will be constructed on the property is issued its own separate building permit as well as its own separate occupancy permit. And so again, what this, uh, agreement would do is simply allow for those building permits to be issued, um, earlier. Now, um, as to that language, my understanding is that the ordinance also talks about a final acceptance and a conditional acceptance. And that's kind of what we're doing right here is that there are certain, the public improvements, the public facilities have changed all prior to, uh, a letter being issued for that.
I got a question. In, in your opinion, is there, could there be confusion in the ordinance, the way it's written and the way Mr. Pettigou is understanding it?
There are certainly ways that our subdivision ordinance could be improved, uh, with the wording and to make sure that developers understand what are, what is required of them. I guess I would agree with.
But it's also up to the city and very specifically the mayor's interpretation.
So I, again, like I said at the very beginning, the idea that street lighting is considered a public improvement, I don't think that's actually unclear. Uh, and so, well, I'm going to agree with our engineer and our public work staff and we're, and that that is a requirement to, prior to issuing a building permit.
Yeah, that's not. Confused.
And so that's why we moved forward with, uh, developing a plan that would possibly, subject to your approval, allow them to begin the earliest stages of construction on these homes while they await, uh, these delayed, uh, streetlight fixtures to come in and for them to be installed.
So your further, your, your previous question, what's the difference? Mr. Ricketts. Contract, you know, he buys a, a lot or he, he wants to be, he contracts with a con, you know, a builder to build him the house and street grass. And he paid for it. However, that, all that worked. The builder goes, builds that house. It's done. But there's no final acceptance. Mr. Ricketts, when can I move in my house? Well, it's not finished. The subdivision isn't. You have to have a certificate of occupancy before you can move in. There's the difference. One permit lets you build the house. There's another certificate that allows you to move in. So that's my question. My way I'm understanding this may be off base is that that's what's asked between building permit, occupancy, because right here it says, no occupancy permit shall be issued for any structure. But you just told me it's no building permit can be issued for any occupancy.
Okay. What you're looking at, this is what's proposed.
I don't know. I think the first paragraph that they had right there that says the permit issuance, what goes to say that no occupancy permit.
No, this is citation out of.
Yeah. That's why I said that that's the ordinance. That's the only part of the ordinance I could see right. There's no occupancy permit. It doesn't say no building. And where I'm understanding from the aspect of the, if, if the ordinance says no building permit, then I can see that we have an issue.
No, read, you're reading just this one piece.
Read this fine.
Can you reference what you're looking at, please?
I'm looking at just the front page of our, uh, agenda item report.
It says under background information. Third line down, sweet grass face, one C subdivision, section one point one F nine of the city subdivision ordinance. Contained in chapter ten, exhibit A of the city's code of ordinance requires public improvement. There, there is, that's wherein the lights are public improvement. Prior to the issuance of building permits. That's, that's out of the ordinance.
Okay. And I, so the subparagraph down below was not part of the.
It is part of it. And as it says, uh, that this section goes on to say. No occupancy permit. It addresses both of them.
Okay. That's where I was confused. I'm sorry. I completely missed the bill.
So this is, this is the consideration part, you know, you know, early on, you know, and I always thought about discuss, consider and act. I go, what in the world is the difference between discuss and consider? Where is the difference? Discuss is this dialogue that we just had. Consider is unthinkable. That's where we are.
Just, just one, one question for Mr. Rogers. How much more time will the staff spend if we do accept this ordinance? Sorry, another comment. I know the mayor said that the staff really didn't spend much time except for himself, but now that only applies to what has happened so far. But going forward, let's say we accept this. How much more time is that going to be on you, city engineer, or anyone else on the staff?
Uh, the biggest ones are going to be building. So they're the ones that are going to get these building permits and have to be sure, you know, who is doing what? What phase is in their end and all these things and checking on these. So they're the ones who's going to have the most. I can't say it's going to be like, you know, are they going to spend five more hours now? I don't think so, but it's going to be something they're going to have to watch for and be a little bit additional work that they'll have to be sure is done before these things get done. And then when it comes to that final, then they're going to be looking to us then to be sure that we've been out, done our final bill. Yes, these are according to plan and they work and all that. So mostly going to be on their back, more so than mine.
I hope, yeah, I guess again, I'm going to go back to the very beginning on the aspect of I, the ordinance was there. I see now, my correction on the building permit side of it and things going on, and then the safety side of it. I'm just still struggling with the oversight. We're, if we've done this before, that there's been an oversight, but I still don't think that that provides us that we should sway away from it. So at this point, um, I would like to make a motion that we do not accept this issuance of a conditional letter of acceptance at this time. Because I think we need to get back to where our, where our say. And if there is further clarification, I'm in 100% with Doug stating. Apply that clarification, bring that in front of us and let us vote and then you can change the order. I'm not one for giving away.
So would you repeat your motion?
I've moved to not approve the issuance of the conditional letter of acceptance for sweet grass subdivisions, phase one A and phase one C for the purpose of issuing residential permits prior to the said subdivisions receiving the file.
Motion is made to not approve the conditional letter of acceptance request for phase one, sweet grass phase one A and phase one C. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey has second.
Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion fails. Or excuse me, the motion passes. Mr. Pettigo is denied. All right, let's move on to item nine C. Discuss, consider and act to approve an award contract for the fire station overhead door project bid to Texas overhead door company. Chief Mays.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm so excited about this, uh, line item that I dressed up for you. But, uh, uh, pretty straightforward. Uh, I'm embarrassed to say that, uh, last year, uh, you approved to spend up to a hundred twenty thousand. This was a new project for me. It's a new process doing the bid stuff and, and really the struggle became trying to get the bids, what information did I need to put into a bid? And so I finally had to reach out to a fire Saginaw and they're getting a new station to find out who their building people were so that I could just figure out how to make this. And then David was very kind to help me through the process. So again, apologize it's taken a while. Uh, since then, we've got more broke doors. So it's critical that we, uh, get this, uh, bid awarded to, uh, Texas overhead door. Um, they were the only ones that turned in a sealed bid. Um, and they were actually the company that, uh, helped me through this process. So uh, I do support, uh, their efforts in a, in their bid. Um, you can see the numbers, uh, and plus the, if they're awarded the bid, then they'll, they'll purchase the, uh, performance bond since it's over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and that's what brings that total cost up to one eighteen, three, six, three point four eight. So we're asking to be able to spend up to a hundred and twenty thousand in this case, there's an incident.
Any questions for the chief?
I have a question. Just, can you remind me what we approved already? The amount?
A hundred, up to a hundred and twenty thousand.
That's in our budget.
Okay, it's in our budget already. Okay. So, so this is under our budget.
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, I don't have a question. I have a comment. Uh, Chief Mays, I want to thank you for your 10 years of service and the quality leadership that you've given this city. We appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just have one quick question and I think I, I saw this in our budget ahead of time. So I'm all 100% for it. Again, my concern is only getting one bid.
Sure. Uh, I get it. I can, um, when I spoke to the original company that had, uh, that fixes our doors every day and they're the ones that kind of gave me that initial number. Um, and that's what I'm forward with the mayor and we did that. And so, uh, this, the numbers from that other company do, are, are very similar. I get your point, but I, I do feel based on previous information that we're, we're on par.
Let me, let me, uh, ask this. The, so we got one response. The contractor that responded, they do, do they have to work for other fire stations in and around the area you know of?
Yes, I, I don't remember which all ones they are, but I, I know, like I said, reached out to Saginaw, uh, Burlison, uh, was another new, new fire station. I remember that third one that I knew, but they do do work in the area. They all came with, uh, positive remarks, uh, that's what makes me feel confident.
Mayor Halsey? Yes. I moved to approve the award contract for the fire station overhead door project bid to the Texas overhead door company.
A motion is made to approve contract, award contract to fire station overhead door. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second that.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Motion passes. Item D ninety. Discuss, consider and act on agreement with Express Services Inc. for staffing services. Ms. Lamb.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, as you all know, we've had in, uh, the previous year's budget as well as this year's budget. And we've been looking for a staff accountant, uh, to help in the finance department for almost a year. We had someone that was on board to come August first. And they were evidently using that position as a negotiation tactic with their current employer. And we've seen that happen on several positions we've tried to fill. They ended up not coming. Um, the quality of the applications that we're receiving were not really, um, understanding why that they're not, um, experienced as, as requested in the job app and the job description. Uh, the type of candidate that we're trying to, uh, attract. The, um, we HR director Shannon and myself, we've brainstormed several different things. We've contacted University of North Texas Public Inform, or Public Management Division. Uh, we've reached out to pretty much every standard, um, job placement advertising. Indeed, we've, um, placed ads with, uh, Tex, Texas Municipal League in their, uh, job placement. We just, uh, don't seem to be able to attract the candidates. So one of the things that, um, Shannon and I talked about recently was just trying to find other avenues and possibly using what would commonly be termed as a recruiter or headhunter, uh, type firm. Um, just so happened, express personnel contacted Shannon shortly after that. And, uh, so we met with them and we had quite a discussion about some of the dynamics we're seeing in North Texas. They have a office in Fort Worth and they also have one in North Texas. And, um, some of the challenges that, uh, we talked about, that we think we're finding is our proximity to Ameritrade, Schwab, Fidelity, uh, Deloitte, those, um, types of firms that are looking all the time for, uh, accounting and finance positions. Um, the express, um, office has a finance and accounting, uh, division. And they do, um, a lot of recruiting and they do a lot of direct hire placement. Uh, part of the issue that, um, we've seen, as I mentioned earlier, was, um, people looking for a job. And then when it comes down to, uh, possibly placing them, well, they were just kind of trying to see what was out there and negotiate with their current employer, a better deal. Um, the people that are working with express are definitely looking for full-time employment, not with their current employer. They're looking to find a new position. Um, they are vetted by express personnel to be sure that they have the qualifications. If there's testing required for certain skills that they've already gone through that. Um, and so they've already determined or will have already determined before they would send us a candidate that they are qualified for the position that we're looking for. So tonight you have an agreement before you that they have, um, uh, given and our attorney has reviewed it. And it's for a direct placement hire. Um, we would be looking at, uh, working with them to have them send us candidates. We would not pay any fee at all unless we actually ended up hiring one of the candidates that they sent to us. Um, there is fee. Uh, the fee would be, um, according to this agreement, their normal fee is 30% of the annual salary of that position. And they've agreed to discount that for us, um, to 25%. that for us, um, to 25%. So in the, uh, in the budget for this position is basically, uh, around, it's like 69,000 and some change, just basically a $70,000, um, budgeted position. And they have the fee for the 25% between, or a salary between 65 and 75 would be, uh, 16,250, 16,250 to 18,750. Um, as proposed in the budget, the funds that we have with this position already being open, uh, for four months of this year, we could certainly cover that fee within the budget that's already been allocated for this position. Also in the agreement, uh, one of the, uh, caveats that we have is that they would, um, have a 90-day guarantee so that if we, um, if they sent us a candidate and we agreed to hire them and during that 90-day period, we determine that it's not a good fit, um, perhaps the skills don't actually bear out to match what we thought we were getting, um, that we can, uh, ask for them to do another search and there would be no additional fee to us since we have already paid that fee. Um, and so that's what's for you tonight. We're asking permission to, to try to use a, uh, professional, uh, placement firm, Express Services Personnel, and try to get someone in for this position that we've had open for very long. I only have, I, I have, um, one accountant, uh, or one person in the finance department that helps with utility billing and our accounts payable, um, with all of the, um, new utility accounts and a lot of the additional, uh, projects we've taken on both of those jobs. She used to help me with a lot of, um, you know, she was my backup for payroll. She, you know, just kind of helped with a lot of different things. Um, perhaps not at the skill level that, uh, we're looking for now, but her time is, has been super constricted because of all the additional work that we have on our plates. Um, finance department's no different than any other department. We just have a lot more work, a lot more things to tend to from kids to, um, bank recs to, you know, just everything that's just normal day in, day out accounting type work. And, uh, just really need to have this position.
Thanks. Uh, I, I live this every day with Martha. And we've been needing a staff accountant probably for a year at least. And we've been looking for a long, long time, maybe about a year. And, uh, it's time that we get off firstly. Uh, we need to go with professional group like this, pre-stream these candidates, these are people who are seriously looking for a job. Um, and, uh, I, I would, uh, implore the council to approve this. But I'll leave that.
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I do have a question, just to make sure that I understand everything. Again, I was concerned that the one thing that's on the 90 days that they don't work out, so you have to ask someone, but I guess that's only one search. So, you know, the key is, is if that person doesn't work out, then you, they get another person that doesn't work out when then we're looking at paying another fee off of that end. But, so secondly, I guess my other question is, this is the one year for that staff accountant there, what if it goes the other direction and that person decides they want to quit out?
I'm not sure that we'd have.
Let me, let me answer that.
Okay.
Let me answer that. Uh, I have used professional, uh, search firms many times in my professional career. And this is not uncommon. That's, that's, that's your risk. Things happen. Uh, there's nothing to borrow, you can't write a contract. Well, I mean, you could write an individual contract, but generally that doesn't happen at the staff level, you know, for a position like that. The, uh, what I do see attractive about it is if it doesn't, uh, there's not a fit for whatever reason in that 90 days and you can tell a lot in that 90 days, then they'll supply another candidate at no additional cost. Yeah. The third one would cost you, but you're going to find out across the board with any professional search firm. And, uh, that's where we, we, we've got to, we're competing with Charles Schwab, Duluth and all those type of folks because it's such con- so concentrated area here. But we pay well, we have an excellent benefit package. I'd be surprised if any of those weren't talking for that, they may, but we're, we're competitive.
And again, I'm not saying I'm against this or anything.
Sure.
I just wanted to lay things out on the table basically too, because again, that's the next question. I'll say we go one and that, you know, they didn't work out. You're looking at, how many people could you have gotten? And I guess, I know we're already too late to search for a year, but if you were to offer that position at 86,000, how many more people would you have got in that want to take a look at our position without us going through a search?
This hasn't been a matter of money. We've left that, we got a budget, but we've left that door open.
Okay, that's, that's what I.
We don't go in and.
We haven't, we haven't been advertising the salary range. We've been advertising the job description and the skills necessary and the education requirements. And I would say, you know, 90% of the applicants that we have received have fast food service or are recent.
Not.
Uh, high school graduates or, you know.
If they touch the cash register, they're applying for this position.
A staff account, you know, and a phone from the fire team, you know, will apply.
Yeah, and this is just another avenue that we wanted to reach out to because this, we talk about this at every staff meeting on what different ideas that we can find to bring in qualified. And we're not the only ones that have that issue. Every cities, private companies have that issue as well. The day I was on the phone with this gentleman, started talking about it, he sent over two blurbs of a couple of people that would, and more qualifications in that blurb than what we've received in applicants.
Again, like I said, I was just trying to bring things to the table, but, because we haven't heard those other conversations.
Yeah, I've, I've got a question too. So it says, uh, if the new employee terminates, does that mean if we terminate or if they leave on them by themselves, is that the end of the same thing?
That would, that would be if they left within the 90 days or we determined that we didn't want them to stay. It would go both ways.
And then going back to, uh, Councilmember Rickett's point about within six months, if that person leaves, is there any agreement that they, that they may consider on the next one? For example, let's say he stays six months or she stays six months. She leaves, we've paid 21,000. Would they consider on the next round for the same position, maybe 15% instead of 31? I mean, you're talking $21,000 on a $70,000 salary. So let's say you go again in six months, then that would be $62,000.
With my experience, that is, they're, they're a business.
Okay.
They're a business.
And contractually, there's not, not that requires to do that. The only, our only protection is for those first nine.
I'm not saying they're contractually obligated to do that. I'm saying that maybe we should ask them if they would entertain. Any contract is negotiable, it doesn't matter who did it.
We would certainly ask them.
And, and again, I'm, I'm going to vote for this because I, I see that you guys have been searching for a person for, you know, a long period of time, but th- these are just things like Mr. Rickett is saying is, when you put them on the table and think about it, if it does happen or.
Oh, naturally. If that were to ever happen, we would go, hey, can you cut us a plot?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I just come from a background where you're negotiating contracts both on the sell side and on the purchase side. And this, if you have a relationship with your, you know, your suppliers and your customers, this, this is always something that can be considered and can be changed, so something to think about.
I also come, I've had personal experience with Express in the past and everything. And this is the first time I saw that in 365 day that you cannot hire that person. The ones that we've had with Express have been, have been right.
I've, I've seen both. I've seen both. And it might be the demand is so high, they can put that in there. Apply and demand.
Yeah, they, they did mention that they have had that particular problem, um, quite a few times and they're, and that was the reason for that.
And believe me in the, in my professional career, yeah, that crossed my mind. I'll use these, but you know, let me introduce them, then after they leave, I'll hire them later. It crosses everybody, come on. Uh, but this is, uh, very much needed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement with the Express Services for the staffing services to fill the position of staff accountant for the city.
Motion is made to approve the agreement with the Express Services for Staffing Services to fill the staff accountant position. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second.
There is a second, any further discussion? All in favor? 4-4, it's unanimous, motion passes. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much, I'm, I'm really.
Thank you.
9E. Discuss, consider an act on authorizing city engineer to advertise for competitive steel proposals for long lead project equipment. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, thought it'd be good to get before you kind of bring you, bring you all up to speed on where we're at with our FM 156 pump station project. Um, as you'll recall, at some point last year, we had a concept plan before you and I'd like to, uh, turn your attention to your screen and first exhibit is the layout of the existing 156 pump station, which is the 20 by 32 block building there in the center of the screen. You've got 400,000 gallons of water on the ground, those big tanks. Um, we began in earnest the preliminary design for a replacement or an expansion of this facility back in October of 2022. I'm going to turn your attention again to the concept that we put together last year. Uh, what we've been able to do subsequent to this exhibit is figure out that, um, we can expand the existing building in two directions and forego the expense of that large, um, rectangle in the center that you'll see. We had labeled a future 40 by 60 pump station, I believe it was. And we were working out of the, the master plan that you all are currently operating under. We're in the process of going through and doing the modeling, update that. And long story short, if you go to the next exhibit, what we've been able to determine is that we can kick out, kind of difficult to see, but there's a gray square in the middle where you can see we've got a proposed expansion to the west and to the north of the existing building. Um, still accommodating the two 1 million gallon tanks, you'll see that, that large expensive future pump station goes by. Been a nice project. Um, we've got the ability to get you all to take care of it in a basis as well as the ultimate basis, uh, with this proposed expansion process. Just see a bunch of discharge and suction lines there on the screen and those are all just kind of details, but I just wanted to point out that we were able to basically take the 5.5 M G D expansion that we told you about last year, increase the available capacity up to 7.2 and provide 14.4 million gallons a day out of the space. We can do all that through a, a, an additional pump, fourth pump and an impeller swap. We're going to go with 125 horsepower motors in this facility on the front end. Then in the future, we can add a fourth, uh, fourth pump, swap out the impellers to achieve the old needs that still, we're not having to go back and do a bunch of hard work. You try to set it up, think the past Tuesday, right? And, uh, work, work, kind of get a feel for the next exhibit. Up, those are the big retaining wall there in the back project, a little complicated. There's the, there's foot print of the existing pump, those are about five and a half foot long, those are two in the middle, they're 20 horsepower, one on the end is 30 horsepower in enclosed in that 20 by 32 building. And next slide, you'll kind of see what we're proposing. You'll see we have proposing three horizontal split case pumps in the first expansion. See, we're adding, uh, adding to the north and to the west to allow for adequate clearance for our motor controls, electrical equipment. We're going to add a nice roll-up door there on the end to facilitate that fourth pump coming in in the future. So in the future, that'll just, you just throw that in there, put itself up, problem be solved. So beauty of this setup is, again, the fourth pump can come in in the future without taking this facility out of service. All the electrical conduit, everything will be installed with this first improvement project. So just wanted to point that out, you know, I know it's taken us a little bit of time to get things brought up, but I think we've saved, uh, saved quite a bit of funds, um, long-term for the city through this approach here. Um, up top, you can kind of see a profile of what we've done. And so I've had my guys get it to this point so we could figure out on the ground what we need to be designing, what our impacts are. Um, but we've, we've come to the realization that these pumps, the, uh, variable frequency drives that control the 125 horse motors, the motors themselves, the generator, the transfer switch, these are all components that could take anywhere from 30 to 52 weeks to get in. So we feel like in order to meet our project schedules, we can have this facility in service by the time these houses start coming online. We need to jump out pre-purchase of this long lead equipment. Now, we've been working for the last three months with our, uh, suppliers, contractors throughout the state, figure out which of these components we need to go out for long lead pre-purchasing on. And we've narrowed it down to the generator, the transfer switch, the pump, frequency drive. So in order for us to do that, um, we're, we're asking that you allow us to go out and advertise, um, for that equipment to be purchased. Then once the plans are finished later this summer and approved by the state, we'll assign that equipment as coming into our general contract. We'll be responsible for all the site work, 14-foot retaining wall that's out there, the ground tank, um, pulling the wires, et cetera. So, um, that's the ask. And the delivery method on a normal project, you have design, bid, build. You go through and you do your, you do your design, um, then you put together your procurement documents, right? Try to figure out how to get it out on the streets so we can get some bidders interested in the project, evaluate the bid. That's about a two-month process for a project that exceeds $50,000 public work. During, uh, the normal, the normal method for doing that competitive steel bidding, you take, are required to take the lowest responsible bidder, right? So you can't really include anything other than the number that they put in there, uh, for evaluating bid. What we're recommending and asking you for authorization for this evening is to use a delivery method called competitive steel proposal. Instead of a bid, you actually get a proposal. And, but the difference is a proposal can contain other items that, um, prove to be of good value for the city or the best value. You can take into account things such as scheduling, past experience with the manufacturer, their quality of work, et cetera. So, um, given the timeline for this project, um, we're recommending that we, we use that alternative delivery method. In order for us to do that, we had to present a case to you this evening on, on why that method, um, will provide the best value for the city moving forward. So, um, I've got an updated schedule, I think on the next screen, I hope, there we go. So kind of where we're at today, we sit here in February of '23. Um, and we've got the, um, contractual documents, um, that we're finalizing right now for those long lead equipment items I mentioned. Once those are done, those go over to Jeremy's office for a final review and then, uh, put those out on the streets, try to, try to get bids back towards the, uh, losing mine, slide there. Try to have proposals back to you all for consideration in May. Then we would go through the, the shot drawing, production, review and approval process directly with the manufacturer of the chosen proposer. Um, and that's a couple of months process. And then the equipment goes into manufacturing, which can take from 30 to 52 weeks. Now, the benefit to the city in that regard is that you're not, there's two benefits. We can work simultaneously on the rest of the design, which is the bulk of the gray there in the middle page and all this stuff has to go down to the state anyway for review. It allows us to get this out and not have to wait. It also saves the city probably 15 to 20% the cost of those components because the city is contracting directly with the equipment manufacturer. We ball all this up into a, a general's contract, he, he will take care of that, he's going to pay a price, so save a little bit of money, you know, 15, 20% on $4 million for the overall project is probably going to be, um, quite substantial. The equipment itself, I haven't. The equipment itself, I haven't really had an opportunity to put a number to it, but I know that the generator, transfer switch, this, that, you know, you're talking $350,000. The pumps are about $100,000 each, V F Bs, 50 to 80,000 each. So you're talking, you know, six, $700,000, but at least there's some savings in there for the, for the city. Um, but you kind of see how we can program all this, that as the materials and the equipment are showing up there from my second section, they're in line with the award of a general construction contract towards the end of this fiscal, or towards the end of the calendar year, really. And then that way, when the contractor hits the ground out there, he hits the ground with the equipment and we're not sitting there waiting five, six months for shop drawings and things to show up. So we've identified the, the critical components from a scheduling perspective. We've identified those components that make the most sense to leave in the contractor's hands, such as the motor controls and the starters, some other things that are more off the shelf, the ground storage tanks, site grading, et cetera. But we've identified the need for these, these items to get pre-purchased ahead of time. And we're recommending that we be authorized to do that under the CSP delivery method. So that's my five minute spiel. I don't know if there's any questions about anything I presented or discussed or anything in our cover memo, but, um, just thought we'd get before you kind of walk through where we're at and where we're trying to, to get on our schedule. Oh, maybe I should mention, let's go to the last one. Sorry. So that's the budget. Um, you'll see our updated cost estimate that I ran numbers on the other day. Uh, we're right at $4 million, um, total project cost, including the geotech survey, engineering design, testing, et cetera. Um, and there's currently $4.25 million in your budget for the project. That includes that 487,000 developer contribution from the tariff. So good news, we're, I can say we're on schedule because we haven't started anything construction wise. We're under budget at this point as well. That's always good.
I think it was well covered. Uh, this was the biggest piece that I was looking for last.
There you go.
Um, but actually I guess I have one, one question or thing that again, risk adverse. I, I do agree with your competitive bid approach. Um, are you going to also put on technically proficient though, because if all three bids come in less than what we expected?
Sure. And part of what we have to do is we have to identify in our documents, basically the criteria on which all the proposals will be evaluated. Um, I've got my electrical engineer working from his perspective on his things. I've got my two different pump manufacturers that I'm going through and developing that same criteria as well. So yes, sir, that will be, um, a component of it. I think I, on my memo, Steve, if you could go back to that cover memo, please, sir. There's, there's some general language in there, right, on that second paragraph under analysis, past relationships, ability to deliver, reputation, quality, et cetera. So those are all, I pulled all those from the code and, and, and we can add, I italicize that last part because we can add certain things that are specific to our project, right? This one, given the schedule and it, and everything, it's, it's pretty critical. Now, this is very popular delivery method right now on treatment plant, you know, on a couple of other projects. I've done it, passed on the treatment plant because you just have such long delay. We could just try to wait till June when we get everything done and get it approved, but by then we're, we're behind. So we, we've got enough work done to this point to know that these components of work really, when, when the contractor looks at the plans, instead of saying furnish and install, we're saying install. And here's the shop drawings ready to go, or say the paper, they actually kind of give him the number for the company and they'll figure out who's going to unload the truck, get to work.
Uh, yeah, I had one question. If the equipment comes in a little earlier than you expect, then how will it be secured and protected from the elements?
Well, depending on the size of the equipment, um, that's another one of the components that we have to put into our packages. This is where we'd like that equipment delivered. So I'm going to have to get with David over the next couple of weeks before we get this out, figure out, okay, what's the general size of this? Do you have a place to stash it so that it is out of the way? And then, um, we're going to also, we're going to ask for pricing, right? We're going to ask, how much is it going to cost for you to get us this, um, 300 K B generator? And also what is your time, right? Somebody may be able to get it three months sooner. So we have to have the ability to keep those things secured and, and in a place that makes sense. We don't want to be moving a bunch of stuff too. So hopefully we can work with David to find a way to store most of this equipment out there on site. We're not having to move it two or three different times. But we'll, we'll work through all that, make sure that's taken care of.
I got it. So have we done any of these CSP delivery systems or is this the first one that the city has with us?
Um, from my knowledge, this will be the first one that the city, city passed with the, be the fourth one that I've, I've done for other municipalities.
A, a, another question. Uh, you said it saved 15%. W- was that included in the numbers you presented, the 4.2 million is, is already accounting for this 15%?
No.
So it could be less than the 4.2 million?
That's the goal. Yes, sir. The, the budget that I put together, um, I didn't want to make any assumptions. And that was, that was just if we were to ball this up in one good package, throw it out. So, um, I think the way, if, if you allow us to move forward with this method, what we can do, we could bring back the budget and the cost estimate, show, you know, show these components knocked out of the total. I could find a way to try to capture the save, you know, time is, time is critical too, you know, and supply chain issues and everything else. It, it's difficult. And the contractors telling me this right now, they're like, you know, we can't, we can't run the risk of losing our rear end on these jobs, so we're having to bet everything 15%, higher than what we normally. We're talking 30 to 40% on certain components because these manufacturers can't and won't guarantee anything. David can speak to that. You call a guy and, well, this price is good for 37 minutes. That, get what I'm saying? It's not, this is good for 90 days anymore. So the, I think the, the quicker we can get these things secured, right, the time going to prove the value before us, take some of the risk out in general. We're going direct. There's, there's another value for this method as well.
I'd like to make a comment and, um, in my professional life, I've had a lot of experience. We would hit all this best value bid. Uh, we get to take all these other factors in consideration, quality, things of that schedule, cost, all of it. And making, uh, the decision is to get the award. And, uh, that experience has been with, uh, uh, I'll say, you know, whether it be university project or Department of Defense or Department of Energy. And it's a very good method. And, uh, uh, and I've got to amend, uh, felt it from associates, so they put a good program together. The engineering is good. The engineering is done. It's knowing the flow and pressures and all that information they have to have to size a pump and what size pump they had to have and therefore the V F Bs that have got to go with it and the generator to be the backup to it all, that engineering stuff. And, uh, so this is, uh, uh, it's something I have followed throughout this entire process. And, uh, I've got a lot of confidence and would recommend that, that approach.
Well, we didn't even mention, I failed to mention, there may be some, there may be some grant funding available for, for this project as well. That, um, fire folks were able to get a grant put together, uh, for emergency generator. We don't necessarily know, uh, whether that funding is going to come through or not at this point. But we did take what we've developed and gave that to them for their grant. So that could be another, uh, feather in the cap, but hopefully we get some good news on that. Maybe the next time you see this, we'll have those costs broken out, maybe heard something on that grant too. So if you look in the budget, you'll see a reference to their generator, their, what funds were those? There you go, something like that. So we're hoping that those can go offset some of this cost as well.
I think it goes without saying though too, because you already brought it up. Mayor brought it up, who's about the validity of these proposals, uh, too, but also follow up on some of this stuff. Make sure that at least you have some validity there, that you're able to come back to us or do whatever you would need to do to actually be able to respond.
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city engineer to advertise for competitive seal proposals for certain long lead project equipment.
Motion is made to authorize city engineer to advertise for competitive seal proposals for certain long lead project equipment. Is there a second?
Sorry, I second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Nine F. Discuss, consider an act regarding the approval of purchase order with Coal Construction, Inc. For Hassett Fire Station and HSA Ball Field, Baseball Field Park, Road and Parking Area Improvements. Mr. Rogers, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a part of a bigger project that y'all had approved to go in and chip fill off the, uh, drive and the parking area for the baseball fields behind the fire station and to remove the mountain of material back there all at once. So this is, this is stage one. This is getting this contractor, Coal Construction, who we're hitting them in a time where they can get to us. We can get this all down before baseball season kicks off with their grand opening for the season. So they came out, looked at the project, they felt no problem about doing it with plans. We've worked with them. They did the, uh, parking area for the fire station right behind their fence and did a really good job for us there. Uh, so they would be coming in, taking that pile, regaining the road back into a good shape, get a good crown on it, so a little drain well and lifting and raising and creating the same thing, a good drainage for the parking area back there. And when they get all that done and compacted and all tested up and ready to go, and of course baseball season. And this will set us up for later this year when we'll do our I L A with Tarrant County. We come into you fairly soon too, because they're working on that currently, uh, hopefully within the next couple of meetings. Uh, so they'll come in probably with where their schedule works and the best time for doing chip fill kind of work is usually the hotter, the better. It, it's the work the best when it's really hot outside. And that's usually for them. They usually do those, that work in August, September, which is when baseball's kind of slowed down a bit because of the heat and everything. So we're hoping we hit all these schedules just right. It looks like we got, with their coming on board, looks like we can. So we have this, since it's under the 50,000, we don't have to deal with going out for a bunch of bidding. And when we talked to other contractors, these were the one guys that had an opening, had time to get in here, get this done and get out of our hair for baseball stuff. So we were, and since we, they worked with them before, we're real happy to use them again. And they kept us within budget. That was the number one thing when we're doing anything is this budget started out with, at $215,000. With this and our 100,000 we refigured with, uh, Tarrant County for the I L A portion. Uh, we're going to use a GeoGrid, uh, reinforcement laydown on this project for this, uh, instead of a lot of things, it already has a lot of cement and lime mixed into that material back there. It's going to harden real well with this steel. Mike probably can tell you, explain to you more how this thing works, but that will, should give us a really good base to put this chip fill on when the summertime comes. But with all of this, that, the GeoGrid, surveying, engineering, everything, we're into this thing. Looks like we're going to be around 202,000, so would be under budget when it's all said and done. So we're really, really anxious to get this thing kicked off and going.
Let me ask the, uh, the spreading of this, does that, uh, also include hauling off any of that refuse material that's out?
The refuse is done under a separate deal because that was generated through our street department. The street department's taking care of in a separate deal while they're there, their trucking companies there. We're going with their trucking company to haul off all the stuff that we have that's just junk, that's came off of all the road projects we've done.
That's great. So we're going to have a nice clean road and a parking lot.
Be really nice by that.
Excellent.
Mayor Halsey, I do have a question. And again, this is probably more of a, if you can help remind me. Sure. I know last year we had some budgets to try to move, we were trying to, uh, I remember us talking about chip seal last year, last year. Did that just get moved out to this year or did we, or am I confusing?
No, no, it just moved, yeah, same money, just transferred forward.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, first, um, you said you could use some of that for the tennis court.
Yes.
So will that be a problem for the road and the?
No.
The parking lot, you still have enough?
No, it won't be a problem at all. We have some wiggle room as far as raising and lowering and doing some stuff. So no, that won't affect that. And truly 200 tons, that's not as much, but.
Right.
That's pretty small.
And so this is for the parking lot for the ball fields and, and for the road to the ball field. And then my next question then is if they're not going to chip and seal till the heat of the summer, August, September, will this deteriorate between then that would need to be?
No, you shouldn't have any problem with the first, especially with the GeoGrid that we're talking about, that's going to be added to it. Uh, it should hold up to it.
I am happy to make a motion to approve the purchase order with Coal Construction, Inc. For the Hassett Fire Department and HSA Baseball Field Park Road and Parking Area Improvements.
Motion is made to approve the, uh, purchase order with Coal Construction, Inc. For the Hassett Fire Station and HSA Baseball Fields Park Road and Parking Area Improvements. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Uh, nine G. Discuss, consider an act regarding the approval of an ordinance amending the proportionate share of sanitary sewer connection fee collected in the amended West Side Sanitary Sewer Service Area and authorizes execution, authorized execution of the release and third amendment to developer agreement. Counsel, this goes all the way back to 1998. And uh, there's a, um, timeline. There we go, right there. No, 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 that's not it. Yeah, there we are. Collections to date. That'll guide me through it. Okay, when Ashmore Farms, uh, are, you know, since Hassett Park, that was our first, ours next, our biggest subdivision, that started in 98, somewhere in that timeframe. And, um, agreement, they, uh, we needed a large, that was large to us then, a large sewer line. Hassett did not have the money to really participate in that too. And the developers agreed to install that. If I get this story wrong, you let me know, Mr. Rogers. What, and yes, he can. Well, there's some parts we don't need to know. So anyway, so they made the essential, they defined a map and said, okay, this is the service area. And anybody that builds in that area, such as a developer, more designed for developers, that map was. And you will pay a fee per acre to connect to this line. And a portion of that fee, a large portion went to the developer because they have the large contributor to it. And a smaller percentage went to the city of Hasslet. Well, it was a number of years before that went by. In fact, it's 2005, uh, when the first fee was collected. And, uh, the metals was part of that, I think it was. And there were mishaps all along the way when this thing even started out. Uh, the first two developments, city didn't keep its chair and it sent it all to the developer. And then a, a. And then a, a, in 2010, along comes Northland, and Northland pays, I think, around, I'm on 13,000 dollars. And by that time, the city has realized, oh my gosh, we never kept our share from the first, and so we need to rectify the book. But also, we got to redefine this service area, because what we had, part of it was out in the city of Fort Worth, and so that got redefined. And the, the agreement between the city and developer also reclaimed the former fees that it should have kept, and also the current fee that was under the Northland. All right, it gets settled. Well, here we go. Well, we got five developments or so right in a line, and the city didn't collect the debt. This gets resurrected about a year ago, year and a half ago, and we had, I had a staff member working on it, and they compiled some data and go, oh, we owe them $64,000. And I'm going, you know, I read all this, and I go through it, and I'm going, yeah, we sure do. And I know I put it to the attorney, and I'm going, oh, well, you know what? Man, we owe $64,000, and I just thought to cut them a check, you know, get council authorization on it, and, and we're done, and we need to start all over again, this time we'll collect fee. And legal let me know, well, you can't do that, because you had no responsibility particularly to collect that fee. In a way, we did, but legally, we didn't. So the way the agreement was written is, if we have the money, we'll give it to you, but we failed to collect it. This has all been explained to the developer. And, well, it's, it's not, it's since transferred from developer to, to individuals, Mr. Gary Dunn and Mr., oh, what's his name? Uh, Dan Proctor, excuse me, and I've known them both a long time, nonetheless, is, they understand that, that we can't go back and ask these developers, oh, you owe $15,000 so you connected to that sewer line, and like, Dan, he goes, Gary, do you expect them to pay it? And I go, no, and he says, neither would I. So we haven't gone down that road, we had no, it was just, would you be nice enough to cut us a check? What has, here we are today. Okay, in the course of our staff person looking at this, oh, well, we have, for some reason, we got $13,000 sitting over here in this escrow. What happened back in 2010, when they rectified the books because of all other mispayments, they get $13,000 out of it. Well, it should have gone into public work. It went, was over into an escrow, and time goes on, no one's got any idea what that $13,000 is, and they're just scratching their head, nothing happened. Well, then along come, you know, here in 2022, looking at it, oh, well, let's just give them that. Okay, it got paid to them. Well, in reality, it was an overpayment. Here we are today. We have looked at this from many different perspectives. Mr., Mr. Page can recite all this as easily as I can, everybody can. Nonetheless, is, this most straightforward method is to redefine, now show the service map. Okay, the service map used to be larger than it is, but you see all the grayed out areas or the pink areas have been developed, but the green areas, the green areas are what would, are areas that when developed, would have to connect into that line. There aren't any choices, they have to connect into this line. Now, what's been added is the top area at the, is the area at the very top, 101 acres, which would be a high school that's coming. Also, on the very bottom of the plan, this 11 acres, that is a, the, the name of the church is?
Alpham.
Yes. They have no choice but to connect into this line, so that's accounted for. So this is our true serviced area today for that line. The fee per acre has not changed, it's still the same fee per acre. But in that fee, there was a normal split, a, you know, the, I think, $322 an acre nominal, and the balance, about $68 an acre to the city. We had the issue of overpayment, and I think, well, here you have a total of 275.5 acres that is eligible service area. So what we did is take that 275 acres, or, or the, the amount of $13,000 nominal, and divide it by the 275.5 acres, and we get a value per acre that we need to recover for the overpayment, and increase the city's share, and decrease the developer's share of that. So that's what's before you. So it's a redefinition of the service plan area, we're keeping the fee per acre the same, but the distribution between the developer and the city has been revised so we can recover our money. This has been put forth through the Mr. Dunn and Mr. Proctor, they both agree to this plan, and I would recommend.
And I'll just clarify about what the documents that are before you and subject to approval, so in the 1998, back in 1998, there was the original developer agreement, that was the, that set the term, the 10 years as well as the service area. In conjunction with passing that, with adopting that agreement, we also, the city also adopted an ordinance, the ordinance with itself established the fee. And so because we are modifying the fee in regards to each person's share, that's why we're doing ordinance amendment on top of this third amended agreement. So each time we've amended the agreement, it's been for additional 10 years, so we are not amending the term this time. In 2018, the city previously extended the term for another 10 years. So as currently written, it goes through 2028, that's not being amended by this, instead the agreement simply changes the service area. So like the mayor said, what we're doing tonight is increasing the service area, which is our, which was already going to be subject to, not necessarily the fee, but was going to be, was going to be required to connect to the original sewer line constructed as a part of the Ashmore Farms development. This way, they are simply having to pay that parata fee that was created back in 1998, and then the ordinance, like I said, it's, keeps the fee the same, instead it increases the city's share to account for some of the funds that were inadvertently appropriated to the development.
And there's no cost to the city. We all recovering our fee. I'll give you amendments to think about that and ask you any questions.
Who will be in charge going forward of collecting these fees, distributing them?
The point of collection is with building services, Mr. Mike Seppert, he will have a map, and as these developments, but also be public works and engineering, we will have this. When a development comes into those green areas, that's our first notice right there. And then, okay, here's this development, it's come in, and they get appropriated, you know, fee per acre wherever that development is. When it gets to the point, in fact, why, at that time, building services will be notified, because at some point in time, they have got to come in and start paying fee. So we discussed the process, how we're going to track it, and, and not let it fall, because both times it fell through the track. It's not a business we like to get into, but we have this and we need to correct it and move on.
Quick question on the 32.6 acres, I think Blue Mountain Field, didn't we change that for use plan? We probably know.
We haven't changed any, so that was a master use, which is a wish, you know, this is our intentions for it.
Okay.
You're correct. Good eye.
Mayor Halsey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the proportionate share of the sanitary sewer connection fee collected in the amended Westside Sanitary Sewer Service Area and authorizes execution of the release and third amendment to developer agreement.
Motion is made to approve an ordinance amending the proportionate share of the sanitary sewer connection fee collected in the amended Westside Sanitary Sewer Service Area and authorizes execution of the release and third amendment to developer agreement. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I'll second.
There is a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you, counsel. Item 10, I have no need for executive session. Item 11, there's no action to be taken there. Any future agenda items, counsel? We had one on for the inclusion of clarifying our subdivision ordinance.
Correct.
All right, then. Do you have a, okay. Item 13, adjournment.
Mayor Halsey, a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjourn, second?
I second that.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel, covered a lot of ground tonight.